I've got a little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Tuesday, October fifteenth. Let the record show we do have quorum, everyone being present, and thank you all for being here. I hope you all had a long weekend, those of you that had Monday off. If everyone will please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to apply as a United States American, and for equality for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this flag can then be chopped. Si, hombre. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name's Catherine Campos. We're coming from Border Region Behavioral Health Center.
Okay, that's item number ten. If it's okay with the court, we'll go to item number ten, okay? Go ahead.
Okay, we're coming from Border Region Behavioral Health Center for proclamation of Mental Health Illness Awareness Month. It says, "Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and whereas one in five adults experiences a mental health problem in any given year, and whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and three-quarters by age twenty-four, suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death in the United States and the second-leading cause among young adults. Ninety percent of people who die by suicide have shown symptoms of mental health condition according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals. Long-delayed, sometimes decades, often occur between the times of symptoms first appear when individuals get help. Early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. It's important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to help when it is needed. Every citizen in the community can make a difference in helping end the silence of stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness." So, as a representative from Border Region, we do proclaim the month of October of 2009 as Mental Health Awareness Month for Rio Grande City, Texas, to shine light on mental illness and fight stigma, provide support, and educate the public and advocate for equal care.
Is there a motion?
I second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to proclaim the month as Mental Illness Awareness Month, and all in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and also thank you and your staff for all the work that you all do. Really appreciate.
Okay, we take the picture right now?
Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, we'll follow our agenda. Next item is approval of minutes. Did we have any?
Yes, we do, Your Honor.
We're just making the CDs.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, Your Honor, as presented.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and start with our reports under the Gas Department. Mr. Alvarez.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. My report is in your package. I really don't have much to add to it. Pretty complete. We're doing well with our audits. I have already discussed with Reyna, we're low on inventory, but she's already working on it. We just need money.
Age-old problem.
Any questions?
Any questions on my report? Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Next item is Transfer Station.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The report is before you all. I don't have much to report other than all the breakdowns that we've had. This microphone's not working well. The breakdowns that we had at the transfer station, that's why we've had, you know, so many expenses this past month, especially our last month of the budget Other than that, that's all I have to report.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's that noise?
Somebody's dragging chairs.
It's what?
Somebody's dragging chairs.
Yeah. Can you find out and tell them if they can wait until we get done? Okay, Tax Assessor, Ms. Alinas.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is in front of you. This is the report for September of 2019. The total countywide collections for September 2019 were $236,292.47. In September of 2018, there were $288,565.10. There was a total collection of $51,772.63 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $379,196.66 less than last year. Since 2018, taxes became delinquent as of July 1st. Total year-to-date collections for the four Starr County entities remained $13,491,480. This year, the tax office collected $51,880.48 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for September of 2019, just for Starr County, were $147,574.42. The total delinquent collections in September of 2018 were $185,580.99. There was a total delinquent collection of $37,934.57 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $318,853.18 less than last year. As of August of 2019, there was a total of $175,363.67 as projected of 2018 taxes to be collected. In September, the tax office collected $59,452.10 of 2018 taxes that returned delinquent July 1, 2019. Remaining 2018 projected taxes can be collected, $115,911.57 or 1% of the projected collections. This is my report. I wanted to add to the report, well, to this, at this time, I wanted to add, if it was okay with the court, to extend fifteen days after, since the statements will be going out as soon as Commissioners' Court approves the payment for the mailing or for the postage. And if it's, I recommend that we extend the fifteen days, since we're already in the middle of October, for the 3% to be granted to the people, so they can be able to have the whole month as...
Yeah, we've done this in the past, Ms. Alinas, where, you know, we were not able to get them out on October 1st.
Right.
I think we've already approved the 3%, 2%, 1% discounts.
Yes.
Correct? So, in order to, I'm sorry.
I don't think we have approved that.
We haven't approved yet.
The three, the...
Not this year, not this tax year.
Okay, I thought we had.
So, we have not paid the postage.
The approval will be done in this Commissioners' Court, so the postage will be paid as of today.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not an agenda item, but I guess we do need to send those statements out, and we've always done a 3%, 2%, 1%. And if we don't have the statements out by the 1st of October, we're ten days late, two days late, twenty days late, we extend that in order, to be fair with our taxpayers, that they have the actual thirty days discount. So, I don't know what the court wants, but I think...
I agree with you, Judge. When is the next statement going out?
It should be going out tomorrow. As soon as the postage is paid, the statements will be out.
Next Commissioners' Court, we put it on recuactive to start on the fifteenth or whatever day. Tomorrow is, they're going out tomorrow.
Right.
Tomorrow, what they say.
Sixteen.
It says the sixteen. So, we already have fifteen days out of the month that...
And that would also be extended into November for 2%, and then December for 1%.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
You think it's, you approve it?
But we're putting the agenda for next meeting.
Since you all, as the Commissioner said, something on the retroactive, you all are basically going to ratify, that you all...
Okay. I guess in your report, the court authorizes you to go ahead and send them out, as is, and then we'll ratify at our next meeting, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. County Clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. In front of you, I have two reports that I want to quickly go over. One of them, the first one is the collections for the month of September. In the vital preservation, we had 224. Records management, or what we call surcharge, was $5,999. Copies, 2,0238.90. The records archive, 5,0684. The marriage license to the state, 1,0255. The birth certificate to the state was 162. Another one, birth to the state, was 17820. The county clerks had 692 filings, for a total of $16,283.55. And courthouse security was 606. A total due to the treasure for the month of September was $32,630.65. The next report that I want to quickly share with you is the whole year, fiscal year, from October 1, 2018, to the end of this fiscal year, September 30, 2019. Vital preservation fee was a total of 2,060 filings, for a total of 2,233. Our records management or surcharge account, we had a total of 5,395 filings, for a total of $68,839. Our preservation fee, three filings for $3. Our copies, 1,972 filings, for a total of $38,297.66. Our archives fee was 4,781 filings, for a total of $67,214. Our marriage license to the state was 389, for a total of $13,0613. Our birth certificate to the state was 399 new filings, for a total of 756. Our other birth to the state was 1294, for a total of 2,0583. We had approximately 7,608 filings for the fiscal year, which totaled up to $183,901.24. And for courthouse security was 4,651 filings, for a total of $7,130. For the past fiscal year, the total that we paid to the treasure was $384,569.90. So, roughly, we can't compare, Judge, to the previous year, because Vanguard was just placed in last July. So, next, this coming fiscal year, I'll be able to have a comparison for you all for last year and this year. But roughly, we're about 7,600 filings per year, and that's what we're bringing in from the court. Any questions?
Very good, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Projective revenues for the month of September 2019. Collections for the Rio Grande City Port of Entry, $104. The C.D. of Grande, $450. Rowan Police Department, $270. Jail Solutions, $500. United States Marshal Services, on medical transportation, was $7,275. Medical transport, $484. On the marshal services for the inmate, the holding, $137,280. The Hidalgo County Sheriff's Office for inmate holding, $140,000, with $700, for a total of $288,000, with $63. The count for October 4th was federal inmates, who were at 90, and Hidalgo County were at 80, and 88 local inmates, for a total of 258 beds being used up. The monthly average was 83 for federal and 78 for Hidalgo. The difference between last year and this year, from September 2018 through September 2019, was an additional The projected revenue collection for 2018-19 was $31,151,31,065. This is an additional $331,000 more than last year, with $148. And it looks like, from the projected revenues, the projected revenues that the judge had projected, we went $571,065 over the projected revenues.
Over the projected?
Yes.
How does that run?
Yeah. No, no, no. No, that's fun balance.
Probably. We did have a lot of bills this year, so there were some adjustments. Any questions, Judge?
Hidalgo County is paying more than the feds?
That is correct. And, well, it's about the same. Hidalgo pays 60, the feds pay 55. But the feds are paying for mileage and hourly overtime for the guards.
Give us a list, which list, we can always increase your budget, totally sure.
No, but you got to do a good job.
No, no.
Well, the budget did increase.
It's very good this year. There's a big increase. There's a lot of maintenance stuff that will be done, and some items that are going to be purchased that are required by the state, that are new items that are coming up that were not projected and had never been asked for before. So, there's new stuff that we need to implement, and this is costly. It's costly. But it's in the budget, so we will get it done.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
International Bridge.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is a report for September 2019. The total revenue is $196,621.50. And we show a decrease of $11,410.50 for the month of September 2019 compared to the month of September 2018. We show an increase of $13,693.50 on collections for the month of September 2019 compared to the month of August 2019. And we have other collections of $154.87. And the grand total for September is $196,776.37. And on your second page of the report, it has the total collection from traffic for the year 2018-2019. That's $2,356,613. But we do have a decrease of $240,537 for the year. And for other collections, it should be 2018-2019. The year is wrong. So, that's, the total inflow is $4,104.50. And the grand total for the year is $2360,717.50.
How much did we come under, based on the projected that we had? Two hundred and something?
$240,000, yes, sir.
Well, the $240,000 is what we were under from last year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not necessarily from what was budgeted.
Yeah.
No, no, this year.
Compared from the last year to this year.
What I was asking you, the projected collection for this year, based on your report, how much did we come under?
It's supposed to be, it's like the $240,000, sir, because it's, it was supposed to be like $2.5 million, more or less, what it was projected for the, yes, two and a half.
Based on the...
Yeah, you know, and I always need to look for a silver lining on everything. By being under this amount of money, that also means that we overpaid the city of Roma. So, that means we lowered, we should have lowered that debt to Roma considerably. So...
And they're paying based on what they come?
It's based on the projected profit.
They pay on the projected, so we overpaid them?
Yes. Yeah, we pay them 35% of the projected profit. So, the profit was down by $240,000. That means we overpaid them 35% of $240 in excess.
Do you have any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Lady. Preacher, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of September 2019 in front of you. Excuse me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $1,623,228.32. In 2018, it was at $615,613.42, for a difference of $1,7614.90, more so than last year. For the road and bridge, the total fund, the total fund balance, ending balance, is at $88,651.72. In 2018, it was at $136.25. And the difference for that is $47,373.28. This is lower than last year, so it's a negative figure. For the enterprise funds, the ending balance is at $474,967.78. At this time last year, it was at $417,718.95, for a difference of $57,248.82, more so than last year. The Drainage District, the ending balance is at $986,067.62. In 2018, it was at $688,106.32, for a difference of $287,960.74, more so than last year. Which brings the grand total for the fiscal year 2019, 2018, I'm sorry, 2018-2019, to an ending balance of $3171,914.88. In 2018, it was at $1,867,463.72, for a difference of $1,305,451.18, more so than last year.
So, based on your report, the revenue that came in, a rough estimate, you already have the total for the year, right? That's it?
Yes, what we have here, yes, sir, for the...
How did we come out, based on your revenues versus expenditures?
That would, I think that's a question that would be answered by the auditor. But I think, overall, I believe that we did real well, Mr. Arce.
How well?
Very well. $1,000,000. You have the balance shared, $1,800,000.
How well?
Very well.
We did okay.
We did okay. But it's $1,800,000.
But we didn't come out on the black, on the red, right?
No, we did not. No, we did not.
Okay.
Are there any questions, please?
Any questions?
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Pettis asked that we table his report. He was out of town, so he'll have it for our next meeting. And I have no report. Following along with our agenda, the vendor's list.
Move it.
Moved and second to approve vendor's list. Discussion?
Judge.
Yes.
There is no motion for the claims, number five.
Okay, I'll go back to that one.
Number six?
No, five.
Number five?
Yeah. All in favor of the vendor's list approval?
I see, I see.
Oppose. Motion carries. Let's go back to item number five, proclaims.
Second, Your Honor.
Sam, all those bills on the last year's budget will be paid on this, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, it must.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion.
Last year's budget.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the bills, I guess, vendor, yeah, the claims. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is to approve the Starr County Investment Report, the fourth quarter. Mr. Gonzalez.
You have my report in front of you. Just for the record, all Starr County investments are in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and the Starr County's investment policy. The total investment portfolio in the certificates of deposits at the end of September 30, 2019 is $2235,067.62. The overall interest earned for the fourth quarter is at $1,0393.12. As per the terms of the depository contract, the county's amount in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with the pledged securities report from Lone Star National Bank. And again, for the record, this report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2018-2019 is prepared in compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. Any questions?
I do move, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Moved and second to approve. I have a question, Mr. Gonzalez. On special revenue funds, the drainage, our budget or our balance, a million six, you know, because of all the CDs that we have. Yet, on the report that you gave us a little while ago, it had 900 and some thousand. Why the difference?
You know, Your Honor, I don't have an answer to that. I can...
Can you check into it?
Yes, I sure will. Yeah, I'll provide that answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Did we approve it? No. I had a second, a first, I mean, a motion, a second. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is to nominate the directors for the appraisal district. We must have that in by today.
I move that we approve.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to name Commissioner Garza, Commissioner Peña. Discussion. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is proclaiming October as National Breast Cancer Awareness.
Yes, Your Honor. I was approached by several ladies that if we could make this month a proclamation to national breast cancer awareness, so I make a motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is take action on final approval of Los Rancho de La Estrella, Phase Three. Mr. Arce.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to present for final approval of Los Rancho de La Estrella, Phase Three.
This is north of San Tex.
North of San, east, northeast.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item 13 is to eliminate and rename to Old Church Street in Salineno. Commissioner?
Yes, Your Honor. This street is half-named La Vieja Street, and then on the other Yes, Your Honor, this street is half named La Vieja Street, and then on the other half is Old Church Street, so I just want to name it for it to be one, one name for all of it, so that it could stay at Old Church Street. Make a motion to approve, Your Honor.
I remember back in the day, Commissioner, there was a lot of controversy with the street.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is that.
I'm glad you're doing it.
That right now, we have the nine-one-one and the Google, and, and it, this, this, this area and everything, so I had a lot of people wanting to change it, so I'll go ahead and change it right now.
I have a motion, a second to approve, uh, all in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item fourteen is a, discuss and taking action, uh, action on a resolution authorizing the resale of certain struck-off properties by Limebarger Graham Blair Sampson. Good morning.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, just for the record, uh, Michael Conno, partner with Limebarger, as you know, with your delinquent tax attorneys, um, even though I usually try to be a little quick, I'm gonna kind of slow down, because we're kind of changing the process on our resale properties, Judge. Uh, in the past, for many, many years, uh, once we do our initial foreclosure, our tax foreclosure and our tax sale, we don't come before the court for approval, because when we initially put a property up for sale, uh, the minimum bid has to be the amount of taxes owed or the appraised value of the property, whichever of the two is lower, and that's mandated by the, the Texas Property Tax Code. So the policy is that we're able to sell it for the amount that's owed to the county and the other taxing entities, and there's no need to get your approval. Uh, where it becomes interesting is where these properties do not sell, which is the majority of the time. Uh, these are what we call struck-off properties. Uh, for many years, when we go back to resell these properties, we've gone through a very long process of putting the properties up for sale, once we get that bid, because that bid is, is lower than the amount owed to the county and the other taxing entities, we have to take that bid before every governing body, which usually takes three to six months, uh, to get their approval, and if just one taxing entity says, uh, no, we don't want to accept that bid, then we have to refund, you know, the, the purchaser's money, uh, and then redo the process all over again. And, and the problem is that these properties, once they're struck off, you know, when you all become the owners of these property with the other taxing entities, is those properties are removed, removed from the tax rule. So not only have you not collected your tax debt, you can no longer assess them taxes, so you're losing out revenue. So, and obviously, these properties become your liability, most of them are ISOs within the community. So what we've done, Judge, not only in Idalo County, but across the state, is we're using a, a new provision in the tax code that allows, uh, the county to basically approve in advance the sale of these properties, so that's what we're doing. So if you look at your packet, we're here to get their approval on twenty-five resale properties that we're gonna sell on December the third. So, now, the tax code says, as long as the right of redemption period has, has expired on these properties, which in this case, uh, Judge, we're very, very fortunate that we have not had to resort to selling homestead properties, I, I just want to make that very clear to everybody here, uh, that we've done a very good job with, uh, dealing with your, your resident, you know, home, uh, homestead taxpayers, if they have a homestead exemption on a property, either my office will sit with them and work out a payment plan, or Mrs. Salina's office will do the same, but we've been very fortunate that we have not had to, to move to the, uh, to the point where we have to kick families out of their homes. So, all these properties were previously sold, six months has expired, so therefore they no longer had, have a right of redemption. So now the county is poised to pass a resolution with prior authorization, asking the, the sheriff's office to conduct the sale of these properties, and once it's sold, for whatever amount it brings in, that's it, we don't need any more approval from this county or from any of the other taxing entities. So this really fast-tracks that, the, the process, it's more beneficial for the county, because obviously, you get your money quicker, it's more beneficial for whoever's purchasing the property, because they don't have to wait three to six months. Uh, now, out of an abundance of caution, what we've done is, the reason why we're, we're here nearly two months in advance, is because, once we get this approved, we always send this list to the cities, you know, for example, City of Roma, Rio, uh, City of Rio Grande City, we'll let them know that county's commissioners' court, if approved, has approved the, the sale of these properties, to give them notice, and that way, if they want to pull a, a certain property, because they want to do a city project, or in this case, even if you, if the county were to approve this list today, if two weeks from now, the county says, hey, you know, we have an interest in this one property, it's always easier to pull it now, before it gets sold, than having to wait till after it gets sold and having to undo that entire process. So again, uh, Judge, the reason why we're here is to get the, the county's approval on these twenty-five resale properties. Just to give you an idea, these, these twenty-five properties make up just over seven hundred thousand dollars taxable value on the tax roll. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars of taxable property that is currently exempt on your tax roll. Uh, we expect, we never recover one hundred percent of what's owed, uh, we're always very, very conservative, we collect anywhere from a third to about half of what's owed in taxes, so we estimate that we'll generate anywhere from two hundred and thirty-one thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in tax revenue. Of course, the county gets, on average, about thirty percent of that, so anywhere from six, nine thousand to a hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue for the county. And again, this is a much faster process, uh, you thought, we've been doing this process in Idalo County for the past two years, and the reason why, and I think I'd mentioned this one of the prior meetings, that we wanted to start employing this same process here in this county, we wanted to kind of work out the kinks in Idalo County, and we have, we've become very efficient in doing it, it's worked extremely well, uh, this morning, Zapata County approved the same process, and we'll be doing the same in, in Zapata County in, in December. So again, this is kind of the, a newer, faster, and really more effective and efficient way of, of disposing these properties, because it does the county absolutely no good to hold on to these properties for years on end. So hopefully, I've explained that process, I know it's kind of, uh, a little convoluted, Judge, but I just want to close by saying that we work really, really hard with your resident, uh, homestead taxpayers, and again, you know, in the past ten years I've been representing this county, Judge, I've never had to displace a family from their home, and that is always my ultimate goal. If it is their homestead, if it is where they live, we work really hard, you know, between the tax office, our office, to try to get those taxpayers to come in and, you know, whether, you know, they can pay a hundred, two hundred, but, uh, you know, we, we primarily focus our foreclosure efforts on these kind of properties, you know, the, the ISO, really they're the ISO properties within your community. And if you look at, and the packet has, should have all the maps and color photos of all these properties, Judge, and you'll see that every one of these properties is either an abandoned home, uh, there are unsafe structures, empty lots, there's, I think, two, two homes that show some cars parked there, uh, but those are actually neighbors' cars that they parked there, because they know the properties are abandoned, but I can assure this court that, uh, none of these people, uh, it's not their resident homes, it's not really.
All this property is here on our preferred region? None of these here, or floating and everything? Do we have a copy here?
The, uh, we should have a copy.
Yes, you should have, you should have a co, a copy, a copy of all the properties, of all twenty-five properties.
I don't see any here.
I, I've got a copy, we, I, we can make copies.
Okay.
We can make copies, because there's people interested, Your Honor, I don't know which property they are, but I have been asked about that, I said, well, I can.
I apologize for that, Commissioner, we, we did, uh, send a full copy, um, next time, I'll be sure to send all the copies, so then, that way they, instead of relying on someone else copying, I'll just get those copied to you.
They're making them, right.
We can do this one of two ways, Judge, either you can, you, nonetheless, because they're not being sold anytime soon, these are not going to be sold till December the third, uh, you can still approve it, based on, you know, you're still gonna have the information to look at, and again, if anybody, whether it's the county, the City of Roma, if someone expresses an interest to remove it, we can easily pull a property, that's not a big deal, um, or, I can always come back to, uh, another meeting, if you all want to have an opportunity to really dissect all of these properties, whichever one two pleases the court.
Yes, and, and, and I do want to thank you all for working with our, with our taxpayers, I, I know that you, you all do the best you can, so that hopefully, s, they can come to some, some agreement, uh, and, and like I've told many people that go by my office as to what I can do, and I say, I really can't do anything, uh, we're not, we're not in the real estate business, the county's not in real estate, oh, you know, that we want us to collect our, our taxes that are due, uh, if you can find some way to work it out, more power to you, but we do need to collect taxes, you know.
Absolutely.
There's no way we can function without that. So, just want to thank you for, for the work that you all do.
I, I wish I could take all the credit, uh, Judge, but I've got fifty staff members back at our office that, that work every day in, in doing that, and calling your taxpayers, literally visit, visiting them, you know, we probably visited over a thousand people just last year in this county alone, uh, and that's turned out to be very successful, and, and since we're waiting on the copies, I'll just tell you that, over the past few years, we've actually shifted our focus, and I'm actually somewhat ashamed, but act, actually somewhat proud also to say that, you know, in, in the older years, we used to sue everybody and just kind of threaten the lawsuits, you know, we used to threaten and strong-arm people, because we had the power of foreclosure, and we found, over the last few years, in changing our, our, our approach, and we actually filed less lawsuits today than we used to several years ago, but we're able to collect more money, because we visit more people in their homes, it's our outreach program, uh, so instead of, you know, making these families incur an additional five hundred to a thousand dollars in, in court costs and abstract fees, you know, we try to work on it before we get to that stage. Now, once we visit the property, we see it's an abandoned property, or it's an empty lot, those, you know, those we kind of, those are the lawsuits we're filing, but we're trying to avoid the litigation process with your families, because it is costly, and we have found that, you know, you catch more bees with honey than you do with vinegar, so if you treat these people like family, you give them an opportunity to, to work out some payment agreements, most of them do, if not all of them have, you know, and if you're too forceful with some of your taxpayers, then they end up giving up, and that's what we don't want, so.
So, so what you're asking, the agenda is to authorize the resale, uh, that's what you're, because I, I believe we had already approved the other process.
Right, right, well, you would have, you would have to approve the resale and then approve the resolution, there should be a resolution attached, Judge, uh, to the little page and a half resolution.
They took my packet.
So every time we do this process, you know, I'll have to be before the court to get your approval on a resolution, is that?
Okay.
I think that, yeah, that resolution may, may have gone with the packet that you had to take the copy.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, I can add you a copy, just so you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, can I, and, or, or you want to read it, and then we'll, we'll just talk.
Sure.
Is it a lengthy resolution?
Uh, it's a page and a half, and, and basically, what it does is, you're authorizing, I'll summarize it, but it's, it's a. It's a resolution that authorizes Starr County Sheriff's Department to sell, to put up the resale. The twenty-five properties attached, exhibit A to that resolution, uh, in compliance with thirty-five oh four of the Texas Property Tax Code, and, uh, and then, it also, also authorizes us to disperse the money, uh, in, in proration as per the tax code, which is we pay the cost first, the sheriff's cost, the hard cost, publication cost, and then we prorate the, the balance of the money. So if you look at, once you get your packet, you'll see each individual property, and you'll have a, a percentage of what you're gonna receive, even though we don't have an amount, obviously hasn't sold yet, but, uh, let's say it sells for five thousand, then you'll get about thirty percent, and the, the percentage on each property actually changes, it's, it, it's determined, the percentage is gonna be based on whether or not the property's within a city or not, because if there's a city involved, then that changes the, you know, obviously, the equation a bit, but.
Okay. So I guess, um, I, I can go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, I'll be sure to visit with your office before the sale, just to make sure that there's been no changes, or if you have any desires to pull any back.
Do, do you need a vote on the, uh, to resale, or that's, that's the resolution, right?
That's the resolution, once you approve the resolution, then we'll sell it, and then what I'll do is, after the sale, Judge, what we normally do as well, is we'll give you, we'll submit a report, that it'll be a informational report, just to let you know how that sale went.
Okay.
So you can say, okay, well, this is what we approved, you know, back in October for the December sale, and then sometime at the end of December, early January, you'll get a report submitted to your office, that says, by the way, this is the result of that sale, and, and hopefully, we'll see, you know, everything that, that we estimate on it.
Okay, by the way, uh, this year's budget that we just started, uh, I did have more money allocated for you all to collect, so.
Well, we're gonna work hard at it, Judge, we, we got that number.
And, and there's a reasoning for that, Michael, you know, every year, our delinquency increases.
Right.
I, I realize some of it is not collectible, but what is, you know, we want, we want to collect.
Right, and, you know, Judge, since, you know, even though I've been somewhat involved with overseeing this account for the past ten years, in one way or another, uh, I've been more hands-on for the past couple of years, and I'm very proud of the fact that with the past couple of years, we've really changed the way we, we, we run the account, the way we collect the tax, and we've done better every year, uh, and I know there's a lot more room for improvement, that's always my, my mindset, so we got the new number, Judge, uh, and we're gonna work very hard to not only meet it, but hopefully exceed it, and this is, again, one of those tools that we have at our disposal, I don't want to bore you all with the details, but another provision that we're starting to use, it's, it's a, instead of going through the judicial foreclosure process on these, these abandoned homes especially, and there, there's a benefit to letting you know what I'm gonna do here, on the abandoned homes, we normally would follow lawsuit, and, you know, if the persons are normally deceased, the court has to appoint attorney, an attorney at light them, uh, to represent the unknown heirs, and sometimes that litigation process takes three to five years to take a judgment, and by the time you sell it, well, you know, the county's had this abandoned home for years on its hands, and it does anyone, it does no one any good. So we are now doing what we call Chapter thirty-three ninety-one tax warrants, so there's a warrant process that if an empty, if a property has not been lived in, if it's an, if it's an empty lot, uh, less than one acre, if it's an abandoned home that owes five years of taxes or more, and has not been inhabited for the past year, or three years of taxes, if there's a weedy lot lien on the property as well, so you kind of shorten the timeframe a bit, but I can actually get a, a judge to sign it based on an affidavit, and I can actually foreclose in sixty days. So it's kind of like doing a, a business personal property warrant, it's a much faster mechanism, uh, so we don't have to go through this process. We're gonna kind of change things up and hopefully work more effectively, we're gonna start by targeting these properties, not your, not your residents, we're gonna start here, Judge, and hopefully make up all that ground that you're asking for on these, these non-productive properties, that's the plan.
You know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, I might head back to Idalo County, because I got another meeting to run, too.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item sixteen is a action item, and this to approve a resolution for the Texas Department of Agriculture Home Delivery Grant Program, Ms. Ibarra.
That is correct, uh, the grant is for forty thousand, and the resolution is for two thousand.
Motion to approve, yeah.
Moved in second to approve, discussion, all in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item seventeen.
Judge, we skipped fifteen.
I skipped fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Oh, okay, I went to sixteen. Okay, fifteen is also, Ms. Ibarra, and this is, uh, to approve catering services for Roma Salineno and San Isidro Nutrition Centers.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to table this matter for executive session.
Okay.
You have a motion?
I have a motion, too.
Yeah, you don't need a motion to table.
Just table it, okay, we'll, we'll table that one. Uh, item seventeen is an action item, and this to accept land donation from Roberto Luis Sandoval and Violeta Sandoval, uh, containing twelve and a half acres in Porcion sixty-six miar, Commissioner.
Yes, Your Honor, let me shed some light on this, I was approached by this family that they needed to donate this property for personal issues, so I decided to go and take a look at it, it's very good property, next to our old cemetery in Fronton, which will probably triple the size on it, and our new cement, not the, the Starr County one, I'm talking the ones next to Fronton, like, close to Fronton, the new one's already, like, three-fourth capacity, so I'm pretty sure it's gonna fill up, like, in the next five years, so we should be ready, so I make a motion to accept this donation.
Take a motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion, all in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item eighteen is a action item, and this is to accept the twenty nineteen Stone Garden Award in the amount of, uh, two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, sixty-one dollars to the sheriff's office in Friendly Forces, uh, listed, uh, the Friendly Forces is Starr County District Attorney's Office with a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty, uh, Starr County Attorney's Office, twelve thousand, eight fifty-two, Rio P.D. three hundred and sixty thousand, Roma P.D. four hundred and eighty-seven, two oh six, La Gruya, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, Escoatas, fifty-four thousand, Brooks County, Brooks County, $150,000. And eight Starr County Sheriff's Offices, $778,363.
Judge, that word "Friendly Forces" make it sound like, do we have unfriendly forces?
Yeah.
If we do, we need to deal with them.
I don't throw down.
Anyway, we approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution for Indigent Defense Formula, Defense Commission, Grant Formula for Defense Commission. Sam, do you have anything on that?
I asked you, Mr. Perez, we talked about the Indigent Defense and for the next, for the public.
Okay. Okay, there's two, well, there's really three pertaining to Indigent Defense. Items 19, 20, and 21, if, if I am correct, then correct me if I'm not, Sam. The first one is, is a grant, formula grant that we always apply for, and this is to help offset some of the expenses that are incurred by the county when we defend especially undocumented people that are here, that do not have a means of paying for their defense, and yet we have to defend them. And this is a formula where the, the state will refund some of our, our monies, not all, but some, and we're asking that, that we approve a resolution to apply for this grant.
Motion.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The next one is the Public Defenders Program, and this is also for Indigent Defense, but this are cases that are local, where our Public Defenders Program goes in and they defend these people without having to appoint court-appointed lawyers that would cost us. Now, on this one, if you all recall, when it first started, it's, it's a tri-county. It's Duval, Jim Hogg, and Starr. Of course, we have almost 80% of it. What, what it is, the state would match 50/50 to the tune of, I want to say it was 435,000 that we would have to, to allocate. This year, I was really contemplating not going into it because I felt that it was not going to be cost-effective. However, the state came back, and they said, well, what about if you only pay one-third and we pay two-thirds? So that, that helped out a lot. Also, I think that this program is helping us with a number of bits that we have in the jail by processing our people quicker, or our inmates a little quicker. So, you know, I think it is a benefit to the county. It does save us some money, and, and hopefully it gives better defense to our inmates that are in jail.
Motion.
Moved in second. All in fair, please, aye. Motion carries. And then the third one is an interlocal agreement between Lubbock County and our Regional Public Defenders for capital case, cases in Starr County. As you all know, we just went through a very expensive capital murder case in Hidalgo County that we, we have spent over 200,000 already in just that one case. Capital murders are very expensive. We have two other cases that are in line to, to go to trial. So by, by getting this insurance, it's, it's really buying insurance to defend us for capital murder cases. And, and it costs 30, around 35,000. I don't have the exact number, but it's about 35,000 a year, and they, they, it's an agreement that we enter where they will defend our capital murder cases. So I think the, the cost is certainly reasonable. Also, by, by going into this interlocal agreement with Lubbock, it also makes it more feasible for us to get a grant to offset some of that 200,000 that we spent. Not all of it, but, but hopefully, I'm hoping at least half of it.
Judge, it's 31,000.
How much?
34,670.
Okay, I went too far off, okay.
Judge, where's Lubbock County? Is it Lubbock, Texas or Lubbock?
Lubbock.
And is Lubbock County, too?
Yes. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a good investment.
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 22 is an action item, and this is on the Starr County Groundwater District Board.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to table for executive session.
Okay, we'll, we'll table it for executive session.
Same thing.
Okay, item 23 through, through 44?
44.
Our budget amendments?
I got a question here.
Okay.
On this, and Victor, nothing personal against you, Mr., but I've seen some items, I got questions for Mr. Perez, especially.
Right, Sam, up to 44? So the budget.
23 to 44.
To 44.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the other some budget corrections.
Oh, see, the others are budget.
It's a budget, it's a budget amendment, so. Motion to approve budget amendments, Your Honor.
Motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 45 and 46 are budget corrections.
Motion.
Moved in second. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. I think this is the one you were probably talking about. Item 40, well, let me, let me read it. Item 47 is an action item, and this is to approve the 229th District Attorney's Pre-Trial 1920, for the year 1920, and the 229th, Chapter 59, 1920 budget.
I move a reapproval.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 48 is an action item, and this to approve 1920 budget for the eight-liner forfeiture from County Attorney. I guess there, there's several of those, we could.
There's several, and, and, it's nothing personal against you, but I, I got questions for the, for the auditor, okay? Especially, Your Honor, on, on the, on this line item that we were not allowed to, to have in our budgets, okay?
Miscellaneous, sir.
And I need some clarification, because if we allow some of these, I'd like to have those line items in my budget and see what they're for.
He's talking about the miscellaneous.
What are you talking about?
The miscellaneous ones.
I'm talking about miscellaneous donations and all that stuff. I had asked the, the auditor on the ground, about.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah, we met.
I haven't gotten an answer, and based on what I see here, it's been allowed. Look at the, look at the line item, he has, he's got donations, he's got miscellaneous, and he didn't allow us to have only a thousand dollars of miscellaneous. What are, what are we going to spend on ours?
Well, Mr. Perez is not here.
That's what I'm saying. I got questions, and I'd like to have a meet with Mr. Canales and yourself, and, and Mr. Perez here, to clarify what can we use line, line items for.
Commissioner, I can address that very briefly, not in much detail, because frankly, Mr. Perez did not discuss anything with me about miscellaneous. I've heard rumors that there was some sort of limiting on miscellaneous, and if he does in fact that there is an issue, we'll be right here, we'll come right back and, and amend it.
I'd like to, I'd like to sit with you and, and Mr. Perez.
Sure.
And the judge, to, because, you know, we had asked, I asked him to bring us, to look into the matters, and he did not bring it up, and based on your budget, well, they're saying that are allowable, but we can't do.
He didn't take the miscellaneous line item from our budget, just?
Right, yes, sir.
He didn't take it?
No. Million dollars, no, the whole.
Yeah, and, and again, budgets are living documents, Commissioner. They're continually amended, as we just had, I think, like 20-some amendments. I'd ask that it be passed, and absolutely, I'll sit with Mr. Perez. I don't, I, I haven't been told anything, and if, if there's some issue with miscellaneous, we'll, we'll address that issue, absolutely.
I'd like to, to, before we, to go with, get to know with you, Mr. Perez and the judge.
Well, I, I would, I would actually, just, because if you don't pass, it basically brings everything to a halt. It stops everything. And so I'd ask that it be passed, and then we can come back and amend at a later time if there's an issue with the miscellaneous item. As Commissioner said, it's, it's there in y'all's budget, of course, at a reduced amount, and which we would be happy to come back and amend and reduce it down to that amount, whatever we need to. I, I don't have an issue with that.
The question that, that I have, Mr. Canales, is, and we've discussed this before, is some of these monies, my opinion, strictly my opinion, is that they should be going to general fund.
Yes, and that, we're going to be addressing that matter, Judge, a little later on the agenda. That's what you and I had discussed before, kind.
I'm sorry?
That's a different issue than the one.
Yeah, well, it's the same, you know, because we cannot budget monies that should be going to general fund.
And with all due respect, Judge, we have a difference of opinion on that as far as the, what, what you're talking about are the court costs that we've discussed, the fines that we've discussed, and, and I've got a mechanism in place that you and I have, did in fact speak about, that's up, actually coming up in later portion of the, the agenda.
Okay, well, again, that, I, I have a, an issue with that, because I, and I might be wrong, I might be wrong, you know.
Number 48, Judge, it's, it's strictly eight-liner forfeitures. There is absolutely nothing there that, that goes into general fund. There is no, no theory under which they could be directed to the general fund under 48. That's the, now, I think what you're talking about, Judge, maybe 20, 49.
Because my, my understanding, Mr. Canales, and, and again, this was from training session that I attended, the only funds that should go into your coffers or the DA's coffers is what the DA requested. The 59, Chapter 59 of which you, I think, have a different chapter, 57 or something like that.
18.
18.
And no, Judge, there's other issues. There's, there's other, there's a pre-trial as well. There's also the hot check funds that are also exclusive to the County Attorney's Office. There, there's several different ones that, that are actually geared towards.
I know, I know Mr. Perez was, was checking into that. I don't know if he asked or not.
What comes to a halt, when you say it comes to a halt?
Expenditures by our office. The Commissioner's Court provides me with literally.
The next meeting will be in two weeks, right, Judge?
Yeah. The Commissioner's Court provides my office with enough for my staff and the printer. That's what I, I basically get. I don't have in my budget for the paper for the printer. I don't actually have a lot of things.
Because it looks like this should have come up before the budget was managed.
I thought you, you only handle Chapter 59 money.
We, we do now, yes, with the SCU, we do now handle 59s. We don't handle the actual forfeiture. We did not in previous years. This last year is the first year that we've actually had some 59 monies. They're not very much. It's, I think, maybe like 10, 12,000 dollars total.
Those are forfeitures, or what?
Yes, we do not do the forfeiture. It's forfeited through the DA's office. And it's the forfeiture that my investigator takes part in. We are like Real Grande PD, Roma PD. We're, we're the agency.
Whatever y'all want to do.
But like I said, you know, yes, and, and Mr. Perez has not given us an answer, you know, and, and basically, you know, on, on the miscellaneous, and I wouldn't like to, I wouldn't like to air it out here on the public, but, you know, I'll put you on the spot.
No, we've already done that, Commissioner. We've already done that, so.
I guess, Judge.
We've already done that.
I don't know if that the word.
The fact of the matter is, with regards to the miscellaneous issue, the issue that you have with the miscellaneous, as I mentioned earlier.
Well, let's bring it up. Let me, for my concern is, you have a line item for donations.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you said line item, what are you going to donate?
We donate, for example, this coming up tomorrow, the candlelight vigil that we're having, the candlelight vigil that we have every year for, for the, to the memory of the deceased. The children that are putting together, that are assisting at the school district, they will be there the entire afternoon. In order to assist them, we will be donating, or rather, to feed them, to help them stay the four or five hours that they're going to be there to feed them, we donate some monies to the school district to help pay, defray the costs for their meal, that kind of stuff.
We're going to do one by one, Judge, or we're going to take them all?
The thing is.
There's going to be one by one?
We have been trying, and we have always done, like the judge, donate, we said donating to employees of those cakes, okay? I have always donated for years and years, turkeys for my employees, okay? For my employees. And, and for the last two years, I have, have been able to pay them out of my own pocket. I don't mind, but I think it's, it's the same issue that you have donating to the people that are kids and whatever. Why can't we do that, the judge and myself, or the other commissioner, donate the turkeys?
I, I think, I think, I don't think Mr. Perez was the one who, who cut that custom out. I think that was a previous auditor. I, I wouldn't have, don't have the answer for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, way Carter.
It was Mr. Carter.
Carter.
And so, yeah, and, and, Commissioner, I understand.
I just want to be uniform for everybody.
I, I agree. I agree with that. Again, like I said, what, what I can tell the Commissioner's Court is that, that we will halt any donations, and we will not use the miscellaneous line items until we come back in the next Commissioner's Court.
And.
So I'd ask, I respectfully request that it be passed, subject to my not using those line items, and we'll come back.
Like the miscellaneous, if you don't know, you only can have a thousand dollars. And I don't, it's, it's just a matter of having to go back and, you can buy this.
But I guess, Commissioner, we, we all went through that. We were working with a budget that was, a system of the budget that was implemented in 1976. We're just coming up to date, so there's nothing wrong with it.
Wait a minute. Why are we allowed only a thousand? Well, he has $20,000 in miscellaneous.
As I mentioned, Commissioner, I will come back and amend that if that's the case. I don't have a problem with that.
But especially, you know, in the donation part, that why can't we?
There's many ways to skin a cat. He'll just figure out a line item for that.
If, if we approve item 52 and 53, which is the SCU and the 59.
Yes, sir.
Can that keep you going for two weeks?
51 is the hot check fund, Your Honor. I don't see there's any issues there.
I haven't seen the budget, but.
Give us the numbers, Judge, which ones?
50, I think the only one that has those issues.
It's 49.
Might be 49.
49, Judge.
49 is the one with the issue.
Based on the miscellaneous.
And, and quite frankly, Judge, I, I don't see the matter in holding the matter up just to come back in and, we'll, we'll just amend it. It's a, it's a budget amendment. What Commissioner's asking for is basically a budget amendment.
No, Commissioner, that is right, what he's asking, but.
Sure.
But, but we can stop you.
Can, can we, so, so you need?
I'd ask that they all be passed, Judge, and we'll come back and amend it.
I'm sorry?
I'd ask that they all be passed, and we come back and amend it. That's really what we're.
Did you meet with Mr.?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
I just want to know, because, you know, when we met, he.
They didn't do it like we did.
Yeah, this, this was, this actually took place over the last two weeks.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner? We approve it, and then we can amend it once we get with Mr. Perez.
Yeah, I'll be happy to amend it.
Make sure, I have, I got an answer on my question.
Alone, Judge?
Yeah.
48, 48 to 53?
Through 53.
Yes, sir.
I move a reapproval, 48 to 53, Your Honor?
Through 54?
4.
Well, 54 is different.
53, 53.
53, yeah.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve items 48 through 53. Discussion. account for county attorney's office.
Yes, Judge, this is what we had spoken about, the, where we talked about cases that may be dismissed to collect the fees associated. That's what this is about. I have absolutely no budget set up for that at all. It's just a bank account to deposit those fees in there.
Okay, you know what that is, Sam?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It is 11:15, and pursuant to Section 551.074 and 551.071, we will go into executive session to discuss possible order of salaries, amend Amendment Number Nine to policy on drug and alcohol, and policy on vacation, and to discuss possible action on groundwater District Board administrative recommendations and engagement of professional services. We'll be back shortly. It's 12 o'clock, and we're back in open session. Item 15, let's go back to item 15, and this is a catering service for Roma Salineño and San Isidro Nutrition Center, the food contract.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion, have discussed in the executive session, for approval for Roma and San Isidro.
Motion.
Okay, who, but who?
For Roma, it's Nelly's Kitchen, and for San Isidro, Lanes.
Lanes, okay. Nelly's?
Nelly's Kitchen. Velas Kitchen. I'm sorry, Velas Kitchen.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item...
22.
22?
22, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Item 22, that's an action item, and this is to authorize the groundwater district board to engage in professional services.